Okay, welcome to the fourth public hearing for the long-term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. Before I commence, I would like to acknowledge the Warrdjeri people, who are the traditional custodians of this land upon which we meet. I would also like to pay respect to the elders past, present, and emerging of the Warrdjeri people, and extend in that respect to other Aboriginals present. Today, we'll be hearing from representatives of the Softwoods Working Group, Australian Forest Contractors Association, various local councils, as well as a local landowner from the region. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. The transcript of the hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or others after you complete your evidence. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness. According to procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018, there may be some questions that a witness could only answer if they had more time or certain documents to hand. In these circumstances, witnesses are advised that they can take a question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. And finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witnesses from the Softwoods Working Group. Could each witness, starting from my left, please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation, and I believe the words have been provided?
My name is Diana Gibbs. I am the economic adviser to the Softwoods Working Group. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe?
My name is Peter Crowe. I am the chairman of the Softwoods Working Group. I swear that the evidence that I'm about to give, that will be given by me, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Would either of you like to make a short opening statement before we proceed to questions? Mr. Crowe?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to meet with the committee today. We look forward to answering all your questions. Our submission provides a more detailed response to the terms of reference for this inquiry, and we put quite a bit of effort into that. Our focus is solely on the rail of softwood plantations and the processing activity based on this fire resource. The key points that we'd like to emphasise, and we can address them in any amount of detail, are that there's been a shortage of timber products nationally for many years, in fact, over 100 years. The plantation resource has been in gradual decline for over 10 years. The future prospects for the plantation growing sector and the associated processing industries is extremely promising, if action is taken now to address the issues we've identified in our report. We just can't keep talking about it. While the 2019-2020 fires have damaged the industry, it has not destroyed it. The recovery effort has been an excellent example, an excellent example, of private-public partnerships. And despite these fires, the plantations and timber industry in the region is still the biggest socio-economic game in town. We wish to table a summary table indicating the dimensions of this economic impact, bigger than agriculture and bigger than tourism by several orders of magnitude, in fact. The plantation estate needs to be expanded to address national as well as regional issues, and the state government needs to get more involved in that expansion effort. And we have prepared an options paper out as to how this could be addressed, and we wish to table that document. Fire prevention and management are critical issues, and I can't emphasise fire management enough, that require a significant review to ensure the existing and new plantation resource is adequately and effectively protected. In summary, the South West Slopes is a world-scale softwoods timber industry. Our processing mills are globally competitive and modern, and rank amongst the largest of their kind in the southern hemisphere. The industry is highly integrated. That means just about every gram of fibre that's grown is used in some way, either as a commercial product, a fossil fuel replacement, or for environmental protection in the forest. Our labour productivity is around $500,000 per employee, which is a very, very high figure. Our urgent need to maintain this successful and sustainable driver of our regional economy is to have more trees in the ground. At least 30,000 hectares net, in addition to the existing estate, and preferably more. This expansion will not threaten agricultural production, but it would involve the right trees in the right place at the right scale. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, would you be happy to table that opening statement, just so we can get it right for Hansa, who's not here with us at the moment?
Most certainly.
Thank you. The committee has resolved just to ask questions free-flow, so you'll be getting it from anywhere. So I'm looking for people to put their hand up. We've got Mr. Beach?
I'm happy to open the batting. I'll go first. Thanks for coming to, thanks for the submission, thanks for coming today. So just how important, we only get half an hour, so just how important is the softwood industry to the economy, not just of Tumit, but this region, you know, down to Tumaramba, and the communities?
Well, in terms of, in terms of processing plants and the things that we've been hearing most about, i.e. the shortage of housing timber, we have two of the larger mills in Australia located right here. And of course, we also have a third mill in New South Wales located at Oberon. And it's interesting to note that basically all the sawmills that are producing the sorts of goods that we are finding are in short supply now are all Australian-owned, Australian-owned families, Australian-owned companies. None of them are publicly listed, but it's a great sign, and those companies have continued to invest strongly, despite the fact that the basic resource is in short supply. But the bottom line is, we're importing about a quarter, and I expect soon to be one-third of the house frames that we use in Australia.
I know others are probably going to follow on from that. Can I just, I just want to very quickly move on, I've got two other things here, very quickly. In our travels today, we've heard of the, I heard about the lack of training that's currently being provided to foresters in not just New South Wales, but Australia, so both at a vocational level, so tech level, but also at universities. Do you have views or suggestions on how that can be rectified?
Well, I've been fortunate enough to be part of the old state government undergraduate training scheme, and that was extraordinarily successful in the days of the old Forester Commission. That required us to serve the organisation on graduation for five years, and it's fair to say that the Queensland Forest Service, the New South Wales Forest Service, probably trained more foresters through their in-house cadetships than any other organisation has before or since. And I think there's a lot of lessons can be learned from that, but put it succinctly, Mr. Beach, I think the organisations, given the support we're getting from Commonwealth and state, they need to lift their game.
Thank you. And I know this is looking a surprise to anyone, but I've got a chance now. Blackberries, weeds, weeds in general, but blackberries. I guess in general terms, what are your views about how we can rectify the issue around blackberry growth in the plantations? Like, one, how bad, in your words, how bad do you think it is? But two, what is the solution to fixing this problem? And you only have...
Well, can I just jump in first about how important that this problem is? We've, based on scientific research that has been done as to the impact of blackberries on tree growth, because the competition for water, competition for nutrients, and the smothering effect, the growth, the yield, can be reduced by, you know, let's, sorry, I'm going to talk mean annual increments. A mean annual increment on average is 16 or 17 cubic metres per hectare per year. That can be reduced by up to three cubic metres by blackberries. So if you value that out across the year, we're talking about $2,500 per hectare loss just from blackberries.
Per year?
No, that's a total over the growth, but that's, that's a very big number when you multiply it by the thousands of hectares affected. Peter, you can talk about the technical stuff.
Yeah. What's the way forward, Peter?
Well, Softwoods Working Group has taken on as a special project the need to address this problem seriously. And at the moment, we're assisting in, if I might use the expression, rallying all the interested parties so that we can get some decent research going. And it seems that everybody knows of the other, everybody knows that it's a problem. Everybody knows that you can't go spraying round-up everywhere forever. So obviously, we're looking at a biological control mechanism, and it's not just a problem for the foresters, it's a problem for the farmers. And I've been looking at patches of blackberries all the way from Aubrey to Tumit today, and I'll see them on another road all the way home. So I think we've got to make a concerted effort, and we've been reasonably effective over the years at helping governments make decisions about policy and strategy, and we'll certainly be pursuing this one very hard. Our executive officer has been extraordinarily active in this field, and we think that we're starting to make a better headway, but there's more to come.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a correction to an answer I gave just now?
Yeah, sure.
That $2,500 a hectare is indeed per year, I'm sorry.
Per year, per year.
So that's about $75,000 per hectare over the 30-year rotation. Thank you.
I'm looking at Mr. Fanning.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for coming and sharing your knowledge today, and I know that you've been in this space for a long time and provided a lot of feedback and information to us, so it's really good. In relation to the proposal that you've put forward, we know that after the fires in 2020, particularly locally, we were able to ramp up quite quickly the production of seedlings, the planting out of areas, and generally within the softwood space, there was a lot of collaborative work, you know, between the processors, the mills, the harvesters and the like. So there's a lot of goodwill, it seems, in the industry, particularly in this area. If we were to go down this path and have a looking, you know, looking at the model that you've proposed, how, how much do you think we would need to land extra? How many hectares do you think we'd be sustainable to have a, an industry that's not oversupplying or that's, that's going to create a glut of product later on? Because obviously, we have a deficit now, but we want to make sure that in the future, we've got, you know, a right, right number, right model.
Can I just ask that first in terms of... Thanks for that question, Wes. Before the fires, this region, the processing sector in this region, needed about 3 million tonnes of fibre a year. This region could only produce 2 million tonnes of fibre a year, so this region was already in significant deficit. Our whole supply zone has now lost about 40% of its resource, so it's become even more critical. So in turn, in answer to your question about what is sustainable, we desperately need more resource. If we were to plant 30,000 hectares of more plantation, that would yield on average about half a million tonnes of fibre a year. So to make up that existing deficit of a million, we'd need 60,000 hectares planted in this region. Now, that's just to make up the deficit. We would ideally like to have access to even more resource for expansion within the industry. It's no secret that VIZI has been contemplating putting in a third paper machine, but they are not going to do that unless they know that the resource will be made available. So I don't see a situation of oversupply ever happening. And this region is short, the country as a whole continues to import about $2 billion worth of wood products every year, and however much we ramp up our own exports, which are mostly hardwood chips, that deficit never seems to drop.
So 60,000 hectares would be the minimum that you think we would need?
Well, we have put in 30,000 hectares, realising that we have about 125,000 hectares at the, well, before the fires, in this region. So we thought, we've done some analysis, which Peter will talk about, looking at land that is potentially available, given that we cannot clear native veg, vegetation, so we'd be looking at cleared agricultural land, looking at the areas that would suit trees, which are not necessarily the beautiful irrigated flats, and I'm sure Mr. Graham, who's appearing before you later, will talk some more about that. So we think it is realistic to start with about 30,000 hectares, but we would do that opportunistically as land became available for sale, rather than trying to do it all at once. So it might take 10 years.
Wes, just to enlarge on it from a national point of view, the Billion Trees, the nominal Billion Trees Programme that's being talked up by the Commonwealth, equates to about 480,000 hectares. Now, my view is that that's not feasible. And I think that what we should be doing in the state of New South Wales is leading the way in planning processes to identify what areas are suitable for the establishment of plantations, both eucalypts and radiata and southern pines, because we're quite good at growing all those species for their particular markets. And I have been urging DPI forestry to duplicate the work that we have done here and get some numbers together on a statewide basis so that we can fill out the numbers and say, okay, we think we've got this many hectares available, we think a reasonable project, a programme to fund is whatever it is, and work out some costs and see how we might be able to do it and fund it, see how we can bring other partners into the project, and, but generally, get to grips with the issue, rather than just talk, 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 talk. That's all we're hearing, talk. And the only, the only people who have done anything concrete about the plantation expansion since 1990 has been the New South Wales Government. They're the only people who have done anything. So, and I think we should bear in mind that the government's involvement in plantation establishment across New South Wales, and in particular in the South West Slopes, has been a very, very successful, if not the most successful, regional development project in regional New South Wales. Where else have you got a billion bucks' worth of pulp and paper investment just over the hill? You know, each sawmill, by the time you get them fully set up and running, half a billion. So, and then there's the employment, which is fantastic, and more than anything else, the skills and social benefits that are brought to these communities by the industry. We're not talking about low-paid jobs, we're talking about high-paid jobs. We're not talking about low-level technology, we're talking about cutting-edge technology. And, you know, for example, if you buy a piece of wood and it's come from Hines Sawmill, the first person to touch the wood will be the bloke who opens the pack down at Bunnings. I expect within 10 years, for example, that we will have completely autonomous harvesting machines and completely autonomous log haulage. And that's where our industry is going. It's got a proven record, a proven record of leading-edge development, and this is an opportunity, in our view, that's not to be missed. In fact, it's essential to Australia's future that we really do something about it.
Mr. Chair, sorry, if it would help the committee, I'd like to table a national perspective prepared by the Australian Forest Products Association that talks about the future demand, and will be short 250,000 house frames' worth of timber.
Thank you. Speaking of house frames, which is about where I was about to go, we know at the moment, there's quite a weight for framing timber, you know, and to get the housing supply that we need to support rural regional New South Wales and its expansion. Where are we going to get the timber if we're not able to get it locally? Is it, it's usually imported, is that correct?
Well, at the moment, imports are coming in from the Baltic States, and I'm assuming some from the west coast of the US and Canada. But we shouldn't assume that that's always going to be the case. There are two very large economies on the other side of the equator whose wood consumption is going up and up and up. Just by way of example, my information is that Germany and some of the surrounding countries have been supplying up to 80 million tonnes of logs into China per year, and that's going to shrink down to about 5 million tonnes. Where are they going to get the other 75 million from? And China's been scouring the world for logs, and they'll continue to do so. And if we think that we've got some sort of automatic right to have wood imported into our country on our terms at a reasonably acceptable cost to our building community and the people who want to buy their houses, we've got another thing coming.
We've been very, so can I just add to that, Wes? We have been surprised that there seems to be no apparent connection between the shortage of timber and, you know, and the wider economic implications, and the need to get more trees in the ground. The Softwoods Working Group, or through our hub, actually, we're about to commission a serious bit of economic work to look at the national economic implications of the shortage of timber. Now, obviously, there's, you know, the downturn in the construction industry, the lack of affordable housing, particularly in regional areas, but then go on further, the move to alternative building materials, you know, that congealed electricity called aluminium, steel, concrete, horrific costs in terms of carbon and energy, of course. Timber is the ultimate renewal. If we haven't got timber, the costs, economic and environmental, are very significant, which we believe puts even more pressure on governments to take a leadership role in getting more trees in the ground.
Which is where I was kind of going with the question you've sort of taken, like, almost to where I was going to go. In effect, we're reliant on imports to be able to continue the housing construction boom that we're seeing at the moment. If that was to dry up, we've got no ready-made domestic product that can actually support that industry. We're actually potentially holding back rural regional housing supply because of the lack of timber. Is that correct?
I would, I would agree with you entirely.
Correct, yeah. Which has one of two effects, reducing the number of houses that can be built or increasing the cost to people.
And that is an impediment on regional development in, you know, I've recently done some work in Griffith, where they have identified the lack of housing as their biggest impediment to growth, because companies wanting to expand can't find houses for their expanded workforce to live in, so people won't come.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I think government's probably taken enough time, if others do.
Okay. I'll just have one, because we've only got a few minutes left. Thank you for this briefing note, because we, everywhere we've gone, all the hearings we've heard, we've heard about the need to increase the softwood plantation, but no one's presented an answer or presented a way, a way forward. You said you've spoken to DPI. Have you presented this briefing note to them, or have you presented this briefing note to anyone from the New South Wales Government? And if so, what's the response been?
Yes. We've circulated this proposal very widely, and I'd say it's, it would have certainly been in the former deputy premier's office, I'm certain of that. And we'll make sure that the new minister actually gets a copy of it, but we've circulated this amongst our membership, and as far as we're concerned, it's a public document.
Okay. And what was, did you receive any feedback from DPI or the deputy premier's office, or any, any government circles that you have?
Everybody's quite surprised that, with the boldness of the proposal, but...
Fortune favours the bold.
Mr. Chair, for some reason or another, and Diana is the expert on this, people seem to think that if you buy land for forestry, you have to amortise the cost of the land over one rotation. Well, I don't know, how do you, in reality terms and in accounting terms, how do you amortise something to nothing when in fact its value is going up? And my, my view of the world is this is an accounting methodology direction that's been forced on forestry court by the Treasury, just to make sure that the proposals don't stand up. And as Diana explains it to me, the value of the land is on your, on your asset side of the balance sheet, haven't lost anything. And the virtue of Diana's great proposal is the government gets all its money back.
Yeah, sounds like a win. I'm looking, looking to Mr. Primrose.
Oh, I just, what you're describing is, as I understand it, as a non-economist, equity. And therefore, it doesn't appear in any aspect of your government debt, because it's equity, like every other form of equity.
That's exactly, I mean, as set out in the briefing paper, which we have tabled, the beauty of this is that that capital barrier, which is so hard for the private growers to overcome when they have to buy the land upfront, if the government takes that off their list, government gets paid a lease, an annual lease fee, which ends up costing the grower more, but it's spread over 30 years rather than being, you know, with a discounting, well, I won't go into that. And what the government then ends up is an item on their balance sheet which is continually appreciating, plus 30 years of, say, 4%, 4.5% lease fee, which is sort of adjustment rates, come here, 30 times 4.5 is more than 100, they get all their cash back and they have this appreciating asset on their balance sheet. We would have thought it was a win-win.
It doesn't appear as dead.
You know, and then if you then add the carbon market on to that for the private grower, they can meet the hurdle rates that becomes competitive with superannuation funds of around that 7%, which they can't make if they have to buy the land upfront themselves.
I'm just, just looking at...
I think we're good.
I think we've got about four minutes.
Are there any particular parcels of land that are identified, low-hanging fruit, so to speak?
We have identified them, we did some work a few years back, Peter can talk about that, looking at just within this area that was not highly valuable agricultural land, that was within an economic haul distance of the mills, and yes, that land is available. Sorry, Peter, I'm taking your thunder.
We've done a lot of investigative work over the years, and I've been actively spitting land purchase for a long time in my former position as executive general manager in Watson Forest Corporation. I reckon there wouldn't be a property in the tree-growing areas of New South Wales, if we could call them that, that we don't know about. We know them all.
But they would be suitable to something on this?
Yeah, but we've got to wait for them to come on the market.
Yep.
Just very quickly, Peter, can you? Just important, people have raised the impact of the fires, the Dunce Road fire in particular, but just in very short dollar job terms, what was the impact to the Dunce, of the Dunce Road fire to the Tumit Snowy Valleys, including Tumaramba and Conwy?
We'll be able to tell you that in six months' time, Mr. Beach. Everybody asks us that question, and at the moment, you know, we haven't had the retrenchments that everybody feared, the mills are actively looking for new staff right now. The mills are actively looking for new staff right now. What would the team from the University of Canberra that we worked with to do this report, of which you have an extract tabled, in 2017, did some more work in 2020, just before the fires, obviously. We've asked them to come back and they're starting work next week to look two years after the fire, to use exactly the same methodology, to say what is the economic impact of the industry now, so we can compare them and see what the impact of the fires has been. But we don't want to just make guesses. I think we told the government back in January and the then Deputy Premier, we have to credit him with coming down while the fires were still raging and asking us what we needed. The government's response has been excellent. We said at worst, since we've lost 40% of our supply zone resource, it could be a 40% drop, which on total output of $2 billion, given the flow-on effects, that could be 800 million less economic activity in this region. Now, that concentrated...
Per year.
That concentrated his mind wonderfully well and that's why we referred to this excellent example of public-private partnership. The government with their bushfire recovery grants has really helped the industry adopt new technology, which they would have to have done anyway, but it was the big shock that made them move now to improve their recovery rates, use lower quality, younger timber, change their processing activity to be more efficient. So we actually, the only direction from here is up.
Thank you. That actually concludes our time. It went really quick. I wish we could have another half an hour with you. Your evidence was through and your submissions were excellent as well. So thank you very much for your time.
My pleasure.
Truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure there's ever any other question you want answering. Our trusty executive officer will send you anything you like.
No problem. Thank you very much for your time.
It's good to see you running marathons again, Peter. It's good to see you running marathons again.
Excellent. I now welcome back our next witnesses from Kuta Mungagang, the Royal Regional Council, Graeme Hymshire Council and Snowy Valleys Council. Could you please state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation? Same with you, Ms Counselor Graham.
Yeah, Counselor David Graham, Kuta Gumi Gai Regional Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Counselor Ian Chaffey?
Counselor Ian Chaffey, Snowy Valleys Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Okay, Greg Blackie, Director of Engineering, Grading Hym Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. And before I open up the questions, I'd just like to publicly congratulate you, Counselor Chaffey, on your appointment as Mayor.
Election is met.
Election is met, well done. Congratulations. I'm looking... Yes, if either of you would like to make a short opening statement before we proceed.
Look, first of all, having listened to Peter Crowe and Diana Gibbs give evidence on behalf of the Softwoods Working Group, of which I for many years was a member of, and I haven't been involved in local government for five years, so as such, I'm a little bit rusty on my knowledge of the softwood industry. But suffice to say that the catastrophe of the Duns Road fire and the impact on the softwood industry in 1920 has had a significant impact on not only the present, but it will have a significant impact into the future of the softwood industry in Snowy Valleys and particularly our neighbouring Shires. If we hadn't had people with the long-term vision that planted these pine plantations going back probably 70 years now, we wouldn't have found ourselves in a position of being able to supply a part of our softwood or timber needs into the future. And to have not, in my opinion, protected the asset in an appropriate way to allow the devastation that occurred is probably negligent, to say the least. As to how we address it, I think we have to, as a nation, make our mind whether we're prepared to plunder the rest of the world for our timber needs or whether we're prepared to grow our own. And I think you wouldn't be naive to think that we could do that. I think we have to grow our own and I think that until such times as a nation comes to grips with that basic premises and embarks upon a programme, not only of replacement of the asset that's been lost, but also to grow it. The population's growing, the demand for housing is growing. Just to give you a small example, my wife and I are building a house and we had to wait eight weeks for the framing timber and it came from Western Australia. So that's a sad indication or indictment of the way that we have managed our resource in the past. If we're not prepared to grasp the nettle in the future, it shows a lack of moral fibre in my opinion, no pun intended. Look, I don't need to say anymore. I can be quite passionate about this exercise. I've seen the benefits that flow to our community from the softwood industry. I've also seen the benefits that flow to the nation from the ability to provide the product that we have and grow here so effectively and efficiently. We've got probably the most modern sawmill in the southern hemisphere in Heine and an organisation from Scotland has just bought a major interest in the Heine mill. They obviously see a future in it. I'm staggered as to why our nation's leaders don't see a future in it. Thank you.
Counselor Graham?
Yeah, thank you for your time. Basically, I've got an issues paper here that I can hand to you, but just touch you on the definition of long-term sustainability. Well, a bit of my history, I'm a fourth generation landowner out of Ajambili. My children are involved and my grandkids are coming through, so we've been there for long haul and our country basically joins the Red Hill Estate, which was one that Peter Crowe in 1986 pulled off, 33,000 acres, taken by the Forestry Commission, which is a substantial area that joined us. I've been a local councillor for 22 years and I've been involved in the Softwoods Working Group for 14, 15 years. In relation to the issues, I'll just come to them in a sec, but I'd just reiterate that what you heard Peter and Diana say are the facts. We have a huge gap appearing between what we need to provide housing and this, that and this country and we continue to have to rely on our overseas neighbours to import it. So there is a clear mandate that we have to start to look at. The key issue, which I believe is to grow our productivity, we need better plantation management to and get the plantations returning in a vestiment similar to what other agricultural industries are making. And we're now in a better time. I noticed Mr Veach here, 1986, 87, he was on a handpiece in my father's shearing shed and the sheep industry had the reserve price scheme. When the reserve price scheme fell over, that was the opportunity for the timber industry to really take on because the returns were a lot better. That's just one example. We need to optimise our productivity through what Peter and Diana said, through enhanced weed control. $2,500 a hectare per year is a huge waste of money. And, you know, it's something biological is probably correct now, it's very, very hard, but I mean, it's something that needs to be addressed. We need to expand the existing plantations and we also need to get far better at fire control. And, you know, what happened in 2006 at Ajambili where 6,000 acres, 6,000 hectares were burned, that the response to that sighting of that fire was six hours before anyone got moving. And then the 2019 Duns plane, if you go back to the lightning tracking transfer, this and that, again, six, seven hours before there was any movement or any reaction. And we're all taught very early at a young age that if you're going to fight fires, well, you know, that's that first 15 minutes to half an hour is the critical time. So I've touched on other issues there, like we, you know, 75% of the emergency services levy is funded by our insurances. 12.5% come out of council rates when we get the bill from the state government. And when I first went on Gumi Gai show, I was $20,000 top up. We're combined Kuta Gumi Gai now, we're close on $850,000. It's not sustainable, that cost shifting, sorry about the company issue, but that cost shifting has got to stop because it's just putting us right out the door. And again, it's the same people that pay their insurance premiums that are paying it again. So the state government have only got a 12.5% interest in that and no control. When Peter Crowe was in charge of fire in this area, our greatest asset was having the forestry as a neighbour was fire control. Less than 1% of plantations up to the 2006 fire was lost in summer fires, which is now standing in record and a credit to the ability of him and his team. And that all changed with RFS. So we've got upgrading of skills, we need to continue to improve our roads. And as a local government member, you know, we're now using B-doubles, we need to build our roads to B-double standard, you know, it won't be that long and we'll probably be seeing triple Bs flooding around. Again, we've got to take into account from a local government point of view, we've got to make sure our roads are safe for school buses, individuals, everyone like, so yeah, there's what I see as the issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Obviously, as said...
Thanks Counselor Chaffey.
The joys of mobile phone technology, an old age.
I've been Director of Engineering with Grading Council for the last 14 years and a member of the Softwoods Working Group. So I concur with all the statements made by both fellow councillors beside me in that regard. So I totally understand the industry. I suppose whilst Grading Council has no major industries physically located within the Shire undertaking manufacturing and timber products, it has one of the largest areas of land under softwood plantation in the South West Region. So we have a lot of the forestry, but not the industry at this stage. Council acknowledges the important resource, that this is a very important resource to the supply chain, to the timber industry and its viability and contribution to the overall economic prosperity to the region, which includes Grading. Clearly, land under plantation is in short supply to the industry and the additional more land is required to keep the industry viable and prosperous. Access to the existing plantations or possibly future plantations is obviously council's main concern. Without the support of the New South Wales Government in the upgrading of road haulage routes in the future, council's small rate base will struggle to maintain these routes appropriate to a safe level and without suitable access will impact the timber industry's long-term sustainability in the region. Council acknowledges the support already provided by the New South Wales Government in the upgrade of Cock Bell Road, which is the main feeder road to one of the largest softwood plantations in the area over the last few years. However, more funding is required on roads such as Gingealik Road, which was impacted by the 2020 bushfires under the haulage of burnt logs following the fires. Council is very supportive of the timber industry, shown by its long-term involvement with the Softwoods Working Group, which has provided significant support in obtaining funding from the New South Wales Government for road upgrades and a forum for direct discussion with all players in the timber industry in the South West Region. And I'd like to acknowledge Peter Crowe and his leadership of the Softwoods Working Group over the past, you know, all the time I've been in existence in the Softwoods Working Team, he's been there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'll go first. And thanks for acknowledging my fine work on the handpiece there, Counselor Graham.
You didn't say fine work, Mick.
Okay, at least it's on the record, my colleagues can now, I did actually earn a living as a shirer, mightn't have been much of a living, I did earn a living. I've got lots of questions right now, but you would have heard earlier on a conversation around blackberries and weeds with Peter Crowe. It is an issue that's been raised with committee and submissions. A bit difficult, you might want to take this on notice of this stuff for each of your respective shows, but I suppose I'll just be blunt, do you think Forest Corps is a good neighbour when it comes to weed and pest management?
Growing up and being there my whole life, forestry is a good neighbour in many ways. When it comes to weed management and as we know, they're in the higher rainfall, so a lot comes down into your waterways. The blackberry issue and the St John's Wort issue particularly and feral animals, I suppose, do add costs to our organisation, there is no doubt about that. But the upside from where I've never had a problem in dealing with forestry with neighbouring fences and issues and access like that and also working to get, you know, potential fire controls in place and that type of stuff, it's always worked very well. So there's always give and take in every relationship, yeah.
And it's good to have that on the record as well, yeah.
I think there is give and take, you know, I do think that blackberries are an issue. Having said that, there are other compensating factors the Forestry Commission come to the party with. I think you only have to look though at well-managed plantations versus ones that aren't to see the increased or greater performance of the actual product. It's as plain as a pike star and why they don't prune pine anymore, I wouldn't have a clue, but you know, the management techniques have changed over the years. I know there's a cost associated with better management of the forest environment, but I'm sure that's reaped in the quality of the product that comes out and you can see that in what's being harvested now because there's a desperate need for the product.
And in regards to Grading, I think Forestry Corp is one of the best forestry managers we've got. There are a number of forestry managers that are in pretty good league, but there are obviously the short-term owners that sometimes don't perform that well. But generally, we have no concern with them. Yes, there are blackberry problems, but there's blackberry problems among a number of other weeds that we've got to deal with. We look after high-level rainfall right into the grazing country and St John's Wort and other things that are a major issue to us other than blackberries. So yes, it is, but I think they do a good job.
Okay, thank you. I want to move on quickly now to roads. I'm not sure whether it was Mayor Chaffey, but one of you mentioned the strategic improvement of the timber haulage roads and the amount of money that goes in. I came over from Bombal over the day to come home and just the condition of some of the road surfaces clearly impacted upon by the trucks, the size of the trucks and the amount of traffic. What do you think needs to be, what is the best way about, because you can just throw money at this stuff and have no real result. So what is the best way to strategically go about improving roads that are involved in the haulage in this part of the state?
Good point. If you go back in history, and I was talking to the mayor just prior to coming in, but I mean, in 1973, the Barnett Report said 2% of gross taxation receipts should go to local government, right? At the moment, it's 0.4. So all of a sudden, we have a situation in local government where we're trying to get more and more money for roads and safety, whether it be the timber industry, our livestock industries, our quarry industries, whatever industry, you know, our road support. But we haven't got the level of funding to get the standard up because we've gone to bigger machinery, we've got bigger, wider roads for B-doubles, we've now got triples not far away. You know, so yeah, that in itself is a real big issue for local government, this funding. That doesn't solve the problem you're talking about, but I mean, you know, and the techniques in road construction, I believe, have improved out of sight, particularly with the utilisation of stabilisers and the lime going in and reutilising that product has reduced the cost of how you can improve a timber road.
I think the Softwoods Working Group identified many years ago the prime haulage routes, which has done a lot to focus the expenditure of funds. The Go Cup Roads, a classic example of a high-volume route that's been upgraded in recent times. But you look at Main Road 85, that goes all the way to Gingealik, a lot of the product comes out of Victoria into New South Wales, particularly to Heine, but also up here to OKD and Visi. I think the impact on the road as a result of the fire has been quite significant by virtue of the volume of product that's been carted over the road in a desperate attempt to utilise as much as they could before it was no longer a proposition. Look, you know, it's like everything else that happens in this country, we tend to be lagging rather than leading. We don't identify our problems. I don't believe we spend our money where we make our money. And road haulage in the timber industry is essential, not only to get the product to the mill, but get the finished product out of here to wherever it needs to go. And until such times as we get that right, and I'm not sure that we ever will, but there's no reason why we shouldn't try, yeah, that road haulage will be a problem. Uh, yeah, that, that road haulage will be a problem and keeping abreast of the damage that's done. And a lot of it's dependent on the weather.
Yep. Yeah, in regard to it, um, yeah, we've done a road transport haulage study or strategy as part of the Softwood Working Group. We've kept updating that and that's been great to support getting funding for certain roads. Uh, I think maintaining where plantations are on those specific road networks, rather than letting them scatter all over the countryside, i- i- is something I think we need to look at because we're finding most of our road damage gets done by, hate to say, rogue operators that are running out of small plantations, suddenly running on a small network with no discussion with us. And they simply can destroy some of our local roads because they're simply not up to the standard. All the main players of the game, like the Forestry Corp, the Hume Forest and, and P F Olson, H V P, come and have discussions with council and say, listen, we've got some haul, haulage we've got to do. How can we help you do this? And they actually help us do some maintenance and proactively, you know, work with us to support getting those timber out. And we support them by where possible, allowing them to have B double permits where roads are not B double approved. And we come to an agreement over doing certain things and that's how we work with the industry. Unfortunately, like you said, there's been a few rogue operators, especially after the bushfires, um, completely destroyed some of our network, um, in some areas that we have shown to our state member and things like that. That is, um, is been disappointing to us, but, you know, they send them, they pick up the logs, they send them down and they send them overseas. And I think they're the people we need out of the game. We should be more associated with the larger players that do the right thing.
Okay. Um, just a quick question that you can all take on notice, because Wes has got a few questions, I think so. But, um, I haven't got my head around, I haven't got my head around the, um, uh, the new merged council entities and the, the non-ratable land that you now have in the new, the new Shires. I'm not sure if you've got that to hand, but if you haven't, if you could take it on notice, I'd just like to know. Are you all right?
This, this, this non-ratable land exercise has been an issue that's been there for years. That, that's, you know, we could say, right, we want it rated. All of a sudden, we're responsible for the road network. Do we want that? You've got to be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, somebody needs to sit down and critique this before you rush out and say, pay rates. Because you look at the extensive road network within the forestry system, it, it, it would be horrendous.
Yeah, uh, so Mayor, uh, Chaffey, one of the things that was put to, I think it was us or somewhere, but it was rather than rating, uh, you look at a sort of a royalty-based process.
The stump tax has been looked at in the past.
Which is often referred to as a stump tax. So, look, what I'm really after is, uh, each of the Shires, the new entities, what is your non, non-ratable land at the moment? And that's pretty much, I just want that on the record.
Yep.
Before I throw the, uh, Mr Fang, uh, Mr Black, you mentioned the road haulage study. Would you be able to provide that to the committee on, on notice so we can see where the, the greatest areas of need are or?
Yeah, Diana Gibbs, who is here, she, she had a copy of Peter Crowe's, um, but yeah, there are copies easily available. They've been publicly distributed for, um, but I'm happy to send one to you.
Actually, sorry, just a follow-on from that, um, sorry Wes. Um, you were talking about the industry come and talk to you, uh, about the, the haulage requirements. Do they do that prior to starting to harvest a, a new, a new, um, area? Do they come and say, look, in, in twelve months' time, we're about to do, we'll be opening up this, uh, for, for harvesting? So the council can actually, in their works program, plan, uh, for that by doing the maintenance or the requirements for the road?
They, that, that is correct. They, the, the main players or what I call the main players, uh, or the better organisations do come talk to us in those timeframes. Like, we've got one, one arrangement, um, that they're going to be hauling out for over a seven-year period. And they come forward and we negotiated an agreement for an upgrade of the road network prior to them doing any work. And we brought the, also all the landowners that, um, needed the road, the school bus operators, we could speak to them and negotiate that agreement well, well and truly before they commenced any harvesting operations. So we, we've got clear, you know, cases where that has occurred. Uh, and like you said, unfortunately, the bushfires created a volume of, uh, areas that some, anyway, other companies got involved and yes, decided just to do what they wanted to do because they chose to.
Okay.
However, local government does have the option, particularly if it's a rural local road, of preventing it from travelling on it. Having said that, you've got to be there to stop it. And sometimes the damage can happen overnight.
Yeah. Mr Fang.
Thank you. Um, thank you for all coming and appearing before us today. Um, I'm going to stick with the, uh, issue of roads just for the moment. Um, and it's certainly something that we've heard from, uh, a lot of the players, um, and stakeholders, um, especially over the last couple of days, that, uh, because of the loss of, um, fibre locally, we're having to bring in, um, a lot of, uh, fibre from other places. And so where perhaps, you know, one time a hundred and fifty kilometres was a long distance to transport a load of, of, of timber, um, now we're seeing distances of up to eight hundred kilometres. Um, obviously that's going to have an impact on, uh, roads, it's going to have an impact on traffic. Um, and it's going to have an impact, uh, hopefully not too drastically, but potentially on safety. So, um, Mr Blacky, you said you've done, um, some, some studies on, um, roads, I'd say, that are associated with movement of fibre around your Shire. Um, have you had any experience with, um, I guess the increase in the movements now that we're having to, uh, bring it from further distances and the impacts that, that has now, but potentially also in the future, if we don't start, um, increasing local harvesting and local production of fibre? Um, will, will we see a greater, um, cost on, on roads in the future? Um, greater cost for safety, greater cost on, um, the ability to get around because of the increased movements of that fibre in the, um, Shires?
Oh, there's, there's no doubt there's going to be a change in impact with bringing fibre from further away. Um, that, we haven't done the study to assess that because obviously determining where that's coming from, where it's, and how it's going to get to its location, you know, that is, that is something that the Softwoods Working Group will be looking at holistically. But, um, yeah, it will change, obviously what the current, uh, impact has been because there was an ongoing arrangements, um, with the need supplying the mill. Suddenly then we have, we've had the fires, which suddenly ramped up to, you know, get out what they could out of what was burnt. So that will put a massive increase on the network and suddenly now there's a big chunk sitting out of that. So suddenly, yes, there is going to be trucks bringing, you know, timber in from elsewhere. But where, how and why, uh, well, why, it's, it's, they've got to get there. But where is what's got to be determined and the impact on the network in that way. And yes, no, that hasn't been done because obviously this has only just happened over the last, you know, twelve, eighteen months.
Yeah.
So one of the issues is essentially that, you know, the, the road network will change. But, but the road network, they'll be hauling the product in, it's one they've been hauling it out on essentially because it'll be on the national road network until it gets to this neck of the woods for processing. So, yeah, look, it, it certainly will change the dynamics of the way the, the volume moves across the road network. But if, if we can contain them to the existing road structure, it's theoretically designed to carry the load now. Whether it impacts, like, we're using a different side of the road now. So now we're bringing it in on, on the road that we've designed to take it out on. So that may well have an impact. It's, um, hasn't been planned for. But knowing the way the Softwood Working Group works in these areas, they're, they move pretty quickly to identify what the issues are and then put a proposal now. The problem is what sort of response or how quickly the government responds to that. And look, they're bringing, I believe, timber from Nundle, which is up near Tameworth. And there's also a proposal to bring it from Mount Gambier. So, you know, the haulage routes are quite significant and, and the dynamics of that changing environment is going to force a, an escalation in costs. And, you know, at some point, someone's going to have to wear it. So that, that really hammers home the, the point of growing the product where it best grows, closest to the, what is excess capacity at this point in time. And the idea of planting a pine tree and expecting it to, to be online for, in less than thirty years is pretty naive. And so, you know, they're out there planting eight thousand hectares every year for the next six years at least. And that'll only replace the stuff we've lost, but that's, that's creating a, a glut at a particular point in time into the future. Now you can spread that, but having said that, what do you do then? You've got to keep going. We've got to keep planting the product. And then once you reach that critical mass, you've got the rotations coming through. But we aren't at the critical mass of, of land available for, for fibre in, in Australia by a long shot. And when you think you can import two billion dollars worth of product into the country and then based on the fact that we've lost forty-seven thousand hectares of it, that, that volume's going to increase.
So you'd be aware of the Softwood Working Group's, uh, proposals that, um, we increase, uh, the amount of land that's available to, um, put in, uh, more plantations. Um, you'd be aware obviously that, um, that proposal basically is an opportunistic one where, um, the government would perhaps buy land when it becomes available for sale. Um, that, I guess, creates a situation potentially that you've got this piecemeal arrangement for plantations. Um, coming back to some of the issues that were raised earlier, does it create an issue for local government around planning? Does it create a issue for local government around maintenance of access roads? Um, does it create, uh, an issue for perhaps, um, uh, fire suppression? And I note that a lot of you actually asked that, uh, raised that point and, you know, we can debate the merits of, um, you know, what, um, how, how likely we were to be able to stop what, what occurred here, um, a number of years ago. But, um, obviously, um, we know that, you know, pine plantations in particular are susceptible to fire. Um, and we, we saw that. Um, so from that perspective, if the Softwoods Working Group model was to be adopted, um, in part or in full, what impact would that have for local government? And how would you look to work with the government, state government, and also the, uh, private operators who would be leasing the land to, um, ensure that it's a, a smooth transition?
Wes, um, I can give you a live example. There's, um, eight hundred acres, uh, which I actually privilege around, uh, that was bought in a lower, uh, only at around about four hundred and twenty metres above sea level. So, and they, it was when they ventured down that way to see where the pine had grown down that way. And the production of the pine trees is pretty, pretty ordinary to, to be brutally honest. But the issue that you raised about the roads, you know, it's been, that plantation has been going now, um, a bit, a bit over thirty years. And they still are trying to make up their mind and work with local government as to how they're going to log out of there, back up onto the main roads because, you know, uh, local government's position is, well, if you want to utilise that, you need to fund the cost of upgrading the road and the safety to, to school bus route to get back onto the main, the main road. So it's, 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 it's a real issue and I think, I think the actual cost is what chases them away because the production systems, uh, the timber that's going to come out of there is going to be very ordinary.
Hmm.
Right? So the, the lessons out of that is, A, they, when they look at land acquisition, they need to be buying land at probably six fifty metres or better above sea level. Uh, we got rainfall, uh, that's, I think that's, that pot's certainly proven that end. Also, building onto the existing, existing, um, infrastructure they've got, I think, is, is also very, very important because just bombing up here, there, everywhere is just going to be a nightmare for local government, I think.
Yeah. And I think that's really the, it, it's that perspective that, um, we need to have, I guess, a collaborative approach to this because, um, we might, uh, look to do one thing and, you know, potentially, um, say, run a trial and we might buy a number of blocks. But that piecemeal nature will affect local government. So it's, it's very good to get that, um, perspective of how you would approach that situation because it is going to affect you with planning, roads, et cetera.
I think there's a classic example in the M I S scheme that brought about random development of plantations across the, the neck of the woods. It's, it's important, it's confined within an area because, uh, you know, we know where pine grows best. There's no point venturing into places where it's, uh, you know, not value for dollar. Uh, so it's got to be confined. You've got to take into account the road network to ensure that, you know, you can get access to it in a, an appropriate way because the impact can be significant, particularly if they're, they're clear-felling it. Uh, yeah, so, you know, there's a lot of parameters that need to be taken into consideration. But I think the M I S scheme identified the, the impact of random plantations across the, the environment. And the other thing is, of course, you know, the community was up in arms when the M I S scheme came and they were paying somewhere between twelve and eighteen hundred dollars an acre. And now paying ten and a half thousand, eleven thousand dollars an acre. So, you know, it, that in itself will, in my opinion, restrict where the, the pine plantations go by virtue of the fact that land at that price has obviously got a greater potential for other activities other than growing pine. So, you know, all those parameters, the impact on where you're, you're heading.
Which leads into my last question before I hand back. How do you then, as a local government, manage, um, existing uses of land versus, uh, what is potentially a new use? Uh, so for example, an agricultural business next to a pine plantation, um, how do you manage?
New direction.
Well, you, yeah, how do you manage that? You know, because it's, if you've got this piecemeal nature that, you know, they're all placed around the, um, the area, there's going to be conflict, there's going to be issues, there's, um, and again, it, it's, um, it's very easy to, to, um, have a proposal, but it's, it's that nuts and bolts thing where we go, oh, we, we didn't think of that beforehand. Now's the opportunity to say, this is how we think we could, we could tackle it.
I think there's been plenty of examples in our previous history where the issues haven't been properly thought through, not just dealing with pine. So if we're going to go down the, the path of growing pine as an essential part of our economy, we're going to have to do all this research in the first place. Because as you say, you can end up with a lot of unintended consequences that, that, you know, can come back and bite you on the armpit, for want of a better term. Uh, you know, it's, it's the reality of dealing with these issues. And, and look, I think in the past, the Forestry Commission, if you go back to the early days, and I'm going back to the sixties, where people had obviously considered where to plant it, where the best road network was to deliver the product to the mill and, and also get it out into the market. And then with the M I S scheme, we had this random selection, for want of a better term. And that has left a legacy that, well, it's, it's interesting to see because a lot of the M I Ss that have been harvested are going back to agricultural country. So that in itself tells you that it wasn't well considered in the first place. So, you know, it, it's essential that if, if, and, and the first question's got to be answered is, are we going to, to go down this path? And if we aren't, we need to do it. A lot of research, a lot of it's been done. I think the Softwood Working Group has been a, a very effective organisation over the time. And I think it goes back to the eighties, if my memory serves me correctly. So they've been at it for a long time. They've got a vast knowledge of the issues that need to be addressed. But having said that, you've raised a, an issue that's got to be considered.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got questions. You've just took them on.
Yeah, yeah, we still have time. I'll, I'll track back to you.
Excellent. Can I, I'm just councillor Graham, I want to go back to the, uh, you, you talked about the fine work that Forest Corp does, um, around bushfire. Um, they, they work with bushfires. Can you just elaborate a bit further about that? Like, are you talking about when the fire occurs or their, uh, their preparation for bushfires, like the, the fire trails, that sort of stuff? But just sort of give the, give me a bit of a heads up about what you're talking about, that they do well.
Yeah, well, well, previously, um, uh, as I said, our, our greatest asset in the summertime was the Forestry Commission beside us because, um, they had tow, had tow, spot tow, this little lighting, lighting tractor and devices that came in. But they had dust, spotting towers and they used to have machinery, uh, little D threes and, and tankers and, uh, all, all supportive of men, all, all located around their, around their plantations. And a fire would start or smoke would be seen. And within fifteen minutes to half an hour, they'd have, they'd have the gear there, they'd have a response. You'd have the little D three going around the fire. If, you know, if it was, became evident, you needed heavier machinery in there, well, in, in, that would come. But I mean, it, it all comes back, um, Michael, to response time. But that, now that first fifteen minutes to half an hour is critical.
Yep.
And normally the fire, when it starts, is in the roughest, hardest spot to get to. That's just what happens.
Yeah, lightning tends to strike in places.
Just a fact of life, isn't it?
Yeah.
You're dead right. Look, if you go back to the, the old days of the Forestry Commission in full swing, they, they had crews on standby during the fire season, ready for immediate response, whereas now it's, uh, Whereas now it's, it's, you know, the response time is, is just too long and, and, you know.
Well, I, I know for a fact in that, that two thousand and six one out, out there towards Agribilly, the towers were not manned and they should have been manned. So had they, had they been manned, they would have spotted it, that would have, that would have been under control in no time. Because how that fire started was someone took a car there and ripped the car. That's how it started in the, in the pine plantation, so that's how that one started. So, you know, it's, it's just, it's just, it's just critical and over, over many, many years, I know Peter Crowe in his, his history in forestry, he, less than one percent of plantations were burnt up when, when he, you know, he was, yeah, he was one of the leaders in that organisation. And that just speaks volumes because we, you know, we still had plenty of big fires. I know our, our way where Nenang Grove, where Nenang Grove's under pine now, but out that way in nineteen seventy-two, in the middle of the river on Drouba, a fire started from nowhere, went right through to the Barren Jack Dam and basically the edge of Canberra very, very quickly. But I mean, you know, the forestry in that fire, again, was absolutely outstanding in controlling it back to and keeping it within, in the control finds of where it was going to go, so it was good.
I think one of the biggest problems we have today is people can't make them, up their mind who's actually responsible. By that time, it's a, it's no longer something that can be managed, it's unmanageable. And the two thousand and nineteen, twenty five was exactly that it got to.
Too many chase and not enough in.
That's right, yeah, and there's too many, yeah. Maybe they should leave it to the people who know the country better than those who sit in their headquarters and try and direct the fire. But anyway, we won't go near that.
Yeah, that may be the basis of another inquiry. Not this one.
Well, look, I, I will defend the, I mean, I do think that, that, you know, what we did, you know, we're talking about twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fire, I think. The guys that were on the ground there did a reasonable job.
Oh, look, the guys on the ground, I don't have a problem with them. You, you've only got to look at the local knowledge that those firefighters have. You know, I'm being blunt here, it's a pity they won't listen to in some instance. They, the, the local knowledge is a thing, you know, where's the fire going, how's it react? These people have had experience.
They know the behaviour.
They know the behaviour of the, the situation. They're, they're the people that should be listened to, it's just as, it's, and, you know, you speak to them and the level of frustration they have is, is significant. You know, they, they just feel as though their accumulated knowledge over years is not regarded. And that's sad, really.
Can I, each of your communities, your councils have, you know, a large number of employees involved in the timber industry, not just the Forest Corp, but in the mills and, and, you know, the haulage and all, all that comes, that comes with the timber industry. Since the two thousand and nineteen, twenty fives, what do you think would be, what, what do you think, do, do those individuals who work in those industries feel secure? Do they, they have a long term, a long time future in the timber industry at the moment? What's your sense?
My, my sense is, and we haven't got a lot in the, our local government area, but initially there was a sense of scared what's going to happen. But as, as it's followed, as it's followed out, that stability has certainly can't, yeah, returned and, yeah, they seem to be very, 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 very comfortable, you know, yeah. Our, 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 our biggest, biggest issue is, is housing shortage.
Look, I, I think, you know, some of that's driven by the COVID experience. People are identifying the opportunity to move to the bush, they're identifying the fact that they can work from the dark side of the moon. The, the reality is that, you know, people are moving to the bush. That's creating a demand for housing, certainly. I know in Tumaramba and Tumit, finding rental accommodation is quite difficult. However, you know, I think as a result of the fire, there was a lot of concern immediately after it, you know. The, the damage that was done was quite apparent. It seems to be stabilising now and as I said, there's, there's an expectation that they'll manage the outcome certainly in the, the short term and even in the longer term. But the volumes are, will not be there. They'll just have to be more effective and efficient in the way they go about their business and, and but I don't think it's, probably the people who suffered most from the result of the fires are those who've lost their homes and are finding it very difficult to cross the necessary obstacles to rebuild. And, yeah, that's, that's probably the biggest trauma in the community.
Small businesses in the towns seem to be going from strength to strength.
My distraught, Mr Premier.
Just one very briefly, the, the proposal for a situation where the government owns land and then leases it to private forest operators at a commercial rate. If that eventuates, what opportunities are there under that arrangement for local government to levy rates and charges and on whom would they be levying?
Look, again, it depends on the, the mechanism that's used, you know, like if you were to lease crown land from, say, the Department of Lands, you pay rates, not only do you pay a levy to the Crown Lands Department, but you pay rates on that land, right?
Sorry, Captain. Just interrupting, didn't, what, didn't the state government bring out legislation? Where they were going, where they said that any future land acquisitions for forestry, forestry were going to be required to pay shore rates?
Well, that's why I'm asking you guys.
Wasn't, wasn't, wasn't that, uh, three, two, three years ago? When they came out with that twenty four million dollar land package? They said that if we acquire some land, well then, you know, local government rates can still be levied on that land.
How about given the time? Would you mind just taking that on notice?
Yeah, I would, yes, we'll certainly take that on notice.
Given all the issues about cost. Having this clarified would be valuable, so we understand. Because otherwise, I don't want to be in a situation where I may be endorsing something that actually leads to.
Yeah, agree with you wholeheartedly.
Okay, well, that concludes our, our session with you guys. I do believe you took a couple of questions on notice, including that, that last one. So the committee secretary will be in touch and you'll have twenty one days to respond and answer back to us. But once again, thank you.
So we've got twenty one days.
Nineteen for you.
That'd be right, that'd be right.
But once again, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity, we really appreciate it. It's, it's something that we've got to get our minds around, that's for sure. Now, look, I've just got a little submission which, with your permission, I'll leave with you. Thank you.
Thank you, and drive safely.
Thank you.
We now welcome our next witnesses from the Australian Forest Contractors Association. So starting with you, Miss Portis, on my left, can you please say your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Yes, so Carly Renee Portis, general manager for the Australian Forest Contractors Association. I'll be giving an affirmation today. I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Theresa Lonigan, former director of Australian Forest Contractors Association and director of P and T Lonigan Logging Contractors. I'll be giving a note. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Now, believe it or not, you'd like to make a short opening statement before we go to questions?
Yes, thank you Chair. I'll, I'll start on behalf of Afka. Firstly, we'd like to apologize that we didn't get the opportunity to put a written submission in. I only started with the business on the first of December, so thank you very much for allowing us to come and speak today. Afka represents forest contracting businesses across Australia and we have quite a large membership group in the South West Coast region. And in order to, I guess, get our message across today with this particular inquiry, we, I'd like to introduce Theresa Lonigan, who's a local logging contractor from Tumaramba. Theresa and her husband and their business was directly affected by the twenty nineteen, sorry, and twenty twenty bushfires. So, yeah, I would like to hand over to Theresa, if that's okay Chair.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you Carly. But the forest contracting businesses contribute both direct employment and indirect employment at six hundred and sixty nine full time equivalent. We'd just like to say we'd support the Softwood Working Group written submission and recommendations personally and with Afka, and Afka supports the submission by CFM EU. We've, the biggest thing is that we've had two grants that we have made, what were made available. But as a result of the bushfires, but none of them were suitable for the forestry contracting businesses. They were under the farming, agriculture, but they weren't, we couldn't under forestry get any supervision. We've also tried for the government loan guarantee scheme, but not eligible because we've got no contracts. So we can't provide an income. So that's, we'd like to think that in the future, the opportunities for diversifying businesses and take advantage of fibre optimization and also the use of residuals within the plantation. On a personal level, that, I would just like to say that in this area, we had seventeen crews before, at the time of the fires and we've gone to eight. So in that, three contractors lost all any contracts. One went from four to, four crews to one crew, four to three crews and one crew went from two to three and one stayed the same. Us personally, at the start of two thousand and twenty, we owed one point eight billion dollars. We sold a machine and other assets and we currently got it down to around the one billion mark. And we've got probably three hundred thousand in redundancies. So which, you know, we've been looking for support from the government and think that the government should support us in it's supported not to pay out our machines and, or which is, or and help with redundancies or ask the banks to give the contractors time to sell their machinery. If not, the future of, for the contractors is that if we go bankrupt, contract, any contractor goes bankrupt, the finance companies are going to blacklist, you know, and put a red flag against forestry, which happened, you know, about fifteen years ago. Very hard for anyone to get any finance. So that's going to be a major problem for the future for the contractors. Need to find a way how we can keep contractors and staff employed locally. There's been, you know, opportunities outside, we had the local, Anne Bombala, but outside, we've looked all over the states. We, as a small business, well, as Carly said, we were impacted directly. We were out from two o'clock in the morning fighting the fires, I went home to get food and got trapped at our property. We lost our workshop, our office. And so there's been no support, you know, from the Forest Corporation with anything or from the government from that. We, when we were cutting the timber, Forest Corporation offered us a dollar seventy five extra to cut it. Victoria got up to four dollars fifty a tonne compared to Forest Corporation, a dollar seventy five. We fought the fires for twenty two days and we received things from Hume Forest, nothing from Forest Corporation. They haven't given any help to contractors. They haven't supported them in any way. They even unfortunately lost one of their own members. We lost our, our employee left us last July when he, my husband and two sons drive our machine, we had one more operator. Plus I had an office lady who I had to let go because the office burnt. And then in July last year, we lost our other operator. He got full time employment with another contractor, can't hold him back. Luckily, our sons have stood by us. But I personally am out in the machine now, so I'm doing the office, running the house, doing, which is interesting. But look, I think that, yeah, in the future, that if we don't get support now and it's going to affect long term contracting.
Thank you for that, that's pretty heartbreaking, but I might pass to maybe Chair.
That's powerful. What you, the story you have just told to this committee is extremely powerful. And I know that your story is replicated with other contractors as well. So, thank you, that must have been difficult to tell us that story. So thank you for that. Can I, arising from that, you know, the Tumaramba workforce, so you're, you're based in, in Tumba?
Tumaramba, yes.
How are the other, are the other contractors in a similar situation to yourself? That's the first question.
In Tumaramba, no, one of the, one of the who work for Forest Corporation got a job back. And there was only two of us who worked for Forest Corporation. Under these tenders, there's another contractor who does thinners, but they work for Visi. They lost their machinery, one lot of machinery, but not the other. So they, they haven't re bought more new machinery. They've just stayed one crew, not two. Then you'll have Bergens, who are the biggest operators in Tumaramba, they work for Hume Forest. And they will be impacted. And they have been slowly impacted, but at this point in time, it's not a definite because Hume Forest lost their smaller wood, not their, a lot of their bigger wood, so there's still been other. But they're going to be impacted over the coming years. We were Forest Corporation, as we know, it's been, yeah, all ages, so we've, yeah, so we've been impacted straight away. But, yeah, no, that will come on and a lot of people have left the industry already because of the uncertainty.
As in, as in contractors like yourself?
No, staff.
The staff?
Staff, yeah. I know here in Tumit, a lot of the contractors who grows, they, ones who went from four contracts to one, their staff, they, they went and gone to Snowy two point O or working for local earthmoving mobs. And they said that they will never probably go back into the timber industry because of the heartbreak and it's twenty years, well, you know, before they will, so it's a big loss.
So you're essentially, what you're saying is you've, you've got to try and carry yourself through for about twenty years when the workload will get back to about where it is, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
Or relocate.
Or relocate, okay. So lessons for, for government of all persuasions out of this exercise. Can you, can you tell us, if, if you, what, what, what should have been done better post the bushfires for your circumstance? What should have been done?
It was straight away, it was like, we went back in cutting timber. We, we stopped fighting, fighting the fires one day and we were back in there sort of three days later and the ground was still hot. And I think that we needed more time, especially the ones who were impacted, like who, you know, lost stuff. We should have been able to have more time, but we didn't because it needed to come down and we needed to have income coming in because we hadn't had income for, you know, a month. So some more time would have been good, but more understanding of people's fragility, their mental health would have been, is what is needed. But I think what is, and is the support from the governments, you know, they threw out all these grants. But it was for farming, it was, you know, if you listen to most people, Batlow's the only place where it got impacted. And no offence to Batlow, they did. But in my area where I lived, where there was, we live out on the outer way, there's twenty people, farms out there, ten of them lost their house. No one ever hears about them, but no one hears about us losing our, you know, people's equipment. We lost our shed, you know, our office, no one hears that. So there's not the, there hasn't been the support. But if you're growing, growing, well, sorry, the mills, the forestry companies, they've all received something. But there's been no support and that's where from basically straight after, still to this day, we've got, there's no support from the government for the contractor.
Can I just, so your, so all of your income comes from the, the business? Um, can I just, uh, so your, so all of your income comes from the, the business? From the contracting business? You don't, there's no, there's no secondary income?
No.
Okay, so this, so, and so whilst you were fighting the fires, there, there is no income coming into your business? Because essentially you're fighting fires?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, well, actually, sorry, I will say that we did have a, a, a machine operating and fighting the fires. So we did receive some income from that, which took four months for us to get paid through the system.
That's kind of, that was a section forty-four?
Section forty-four.
Yep.
Yeah, there was a big issue. So, but, um, so we did end up eventually getting that income. But the rest of my, like my family, because the whole five of us are volunteers as well. But we, yeah, there was no income from that. But, yeah, we did get some, but it was so long in coming that we had to get back into harvesting.
Hmm. So let's, if I could bring this down then into, um, a couple of themes. You, what you would like to see is, um, I guess more consideration of the circumstance for each of the individual, um, contractors. Post a bushfire like this, like you'd say, sort of consideration.
Yeah.
Um, and you want, you do want to be included in the financial packages, not, not to be left out of the financial packages or assistance.
Yes.
Pretty much that's it?
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so long-term contracts, are you, are you in a position now to continue to, um, I guess engage with Forest Corp for those contracts when they come up?
Look, we have, we have engaged. Um, we've been unfortunate, you know, for, um, price and whatever, you know, reasons. Um, but, yeah, look, and my thing has been that I've always spoke on behalf of everyone. And yes, this is personally us, but it's, you know, for Groves, which is the Tum tum contract here, to go from four to one contract. That, that's as devastating as us not having two contracts to have nothing. That's a, that was a huge impact on them. So, um, yeah, for everyone, it's been a big, big loss. And, and everyone's put in, um, and for whatever reasons, you know, it's a tender process. So you've got to put, try and put your best foot forward and, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And my last question is, you said, mentioned you do, um, yeah, sold a machine or you've, uh, to liquidate one of the machines.
Yep.
Um, as a matter of, is there much of a market for?
No, we were just lucky that.
Do you sell on Gumtree or like, like what's the process?
Um, you can, there's construction, huh?
Okay.
Yep. And, uh, but we, um, so when we, I was a bit lucky that when I said I was going to sell this har- put this harvester on. I was thinking I would sell it sometime. Lucky I had a really old one, what I could put back into at work. But he, one of the contractors who got the job, he knew our machine was in good order and whatever. And he, he took it straight away. So, but we've, we had our orders and everything on the market. There's no market for him. There's, yeah, we were just very fortunate with that harvester at the time that there was someone. But he brought it and had it sitting there for six months before this contract started. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was an outlay for him, but he wanted it without putting more hours, without anything. So he was prepared to buy it there and then and, but, yeah.
Can I just add to that? We're seeing a similar situation in Victoria at the moment where you have, um, stranded assets is what we're calling them. So, um, although Theresa was lucky in this particular instance, it is becoming, uh, an issue not just in New South Wales as a result of the fires. But certainly in Victoria as a result of the, um, uh, I guess the native hardwood situation. Um, so we are seeing stranded assets, uh, and people that have a significant amount of capital, um, tied up, you know, in finances. And not being able to recruit those, um, to recruit those finances. So.
We should have had.
It's becoming, it's an industry-wide issue, um, you know, for various reasons and of course here, the bushfires.
We had eighteen months left, sorry, of our contract. So our machines would have been, and they would have been saleable. But now we owe too much money on them. People don't want them because there's that much machinery out there that they can buy cheaper machines. Yeah, so.
Can I just pick up while we're on the point about Victoria, as mentioned earlier about the difference in the loading between New South Wales and Victoria in the aftermath? Are there any other, um, differences in the response from the two governments?
Um, I don't know. Well, I'm not saying that, um, like that was HPP compared to Forest Corporation paying.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, and that was for harvesting of it. I don't know what they paid for hauling of it. But for harvesting itself, yeah, the difference in the two companies. So not necessarily, I suppose, Forest Corporation's government, but HPP isn't. So.
Okay.
Whether that's the di- what was the difference, but.
Ms. Porteous, anything from Victoria that's quite different to New South Wales in the response?
Uh, we're talking about the harvest rate?
Eh, anything in?
Um, each, each, um, forestry management, uh, business or forest manager, whether it be state or private. Have their contracts set up in very, very, uh, different ways. Uh, I've seen different rate review mechanisms, um, you know, the, the way that it's actually paid either by tonne or by cube. And I think there is a real opportunity there for consistency at a, at a national level. Um, and what that looks like as far as selecting good value logs in the field, getting it to the right places. Um, we would love to see more in the way of innovation and fibre optimization. So, you know, having Theresa's business, you know, go from, say, harvesting to then, um, optimizing infield fibre. Because we've got a fibre shortage clearly, um, you know, it, it could have reinvested that money in a chipper with some help from the government. And finding an appropriate market. But, sorry, I know I just went on a bit.
No, 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 that's what it's for.
Yeah, there, there are, there are some, there are some contracts out there that, that, um, that really, I guess, drive value. Uh, out of the, out of the forest and also, you know, sustainability from a, um, a business perspective as well. So, you know, and the good thing about sustainability is of course we keep that, uh, expertise in the industry. Um, which is a really big problem that we have. If you read the CFMU submission. Training and retention and attraction is a massive, um, industry issue. So keeping sustainable people, or keeping businesses sustainable will help the industry be sustainable as well.
Thank you.
Stephanie, um, thank you. Thank you for both coming in today, um, and particularly Ms. Long for sharing your story. Um, is it fair to say that, um, I guess just after, um, the bushfires happened? Um, there was actually quite a demand for harvesters and the like to actually get that burnt wood, um, up. Um, and out of, um, the, um, the burnt areas into mills so that it could be processed pretty quickly? Is that, so there was actually an increase in demand ironically before we had the drop-off, is that?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Around here, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the exact figure, but I think it was around fifty-three crews what ended up in this area.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, there was a big demand and, yeah, if we wanted to sell a machine then maybe, but we kept them hoping that there would be, you know, we would be lucky to get contracts. Not probably suspecting that, um, it would be so difficult, um, so, and to sell them now, but.
Yeah.
Yes. And, and that's because it's not usually too, if it's one area what's been affected, it's not another. But because of them, with the hardwood and the softwood from top to bottom, it's really, um, yeah, it's made the, a difficult, yeah, so.
Yeah. And I guess, uh, in the short to medium term, um, there just isn't the fibre on the ground. Sustain the, uh, existing, um, harvesters that were, they're in. So it, it's, it's just a lack of, um, harvestable product at the moment. Um, that means that we haven't got work for, um, a number of companies that, that we used to have before the fires. Is that right?
That's correct, yes, yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, exactly. Like there was, um, seven contractors, eight parcels put up.
Yep.
And, yeah, four, four got jobs and three of us did it. But exactly, we can't, we can't say give us a job if there's, for everyone. If there's no timber there to harvest and there obviously is no timber. It's just how we survive or how the industry, how the government can support the ones who haven't.
Yep.
To sustain the industry, the contractors and that for the next, yeah.
Yep. So, so you, you, I guess played your part while we had to get that burnt timber off the ground.
Yep.
And now you're, um, seeking, yeah, I guess some support. But even down to where the banks, did you say, like just allowing you extra time to actually?
Yes.
Um, find a market for the machinery, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, like that, um, you know, like, you know, we've, yes, we'd like a hand, but we're not asking for a complete handout. It's just some support to help us not, I suppose, not lose everything.
Yep.
Not make it, um, uh, become red flagged for the whole industry in the future. Um, that, yeah, give us time, you know, to be able to sell our equipment and, you know, and it will sell eventually.
Yep.
But it could take twelve months or two years.
And that's what I was about to ask. Do you, are you confident that there would be, say, given time, um, a market for the machinery that you've got? It's just, just having that access to time that would make the difference for you?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I would also say, and security, so the uncertainty of the industry that needs, you know, we need to know that there is going to be that investment in plantations. Um, whether it's private or government, um, you know, the, the carbon market is, you know, at fifty dollars a tonne at the moment. We concede the opportunities, but I think for people to want to start really investing, you know, that one point two million dollars for a harvester. There needs to be that certainty that the industry is going to be able to be sustained into the future. Um, and, and yes, finance, we're, we're, we're receiving reports from, um, equipment sales, uh, businesses. That, you know, they're having trouble even selling new equipment in areas of Australia because of the finance risk. That's been associated with forestry equipment.
Yep.
And the other part to that is insurance.
Could I just ask?
So there's a lot of barriers as well.
Yeah, could I just, one last question. Um, is there the ability, and I don't know this, um, to perhaps, um, export, um, some of the machinery overseas? Where there might be more of a market in the short term? Um, I used to work in the industry where we would import, export machinery as required all the time. I didn't know whether it might be an option.
Um, we, we only ever know about, is importing the machines into, like your machine, not the exporting of used.
So it's not, not usual?
Not, not a usual practice, but.
So you really think of the domestic market for, for the sale? Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? It's almost past the time.
All good, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you sincerely.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. I, uh, now welcome our next witness, uh, Mr. Michael Kingwell. Could you please state your full name and position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Uh, Michael Kingwell, uh, a director and landowner at Agden Billy. Um, yeah, that's about it.
Okay.
Uh, several family properties in the Agden Billy area. We've been there for four generations. Yep, uh, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Uh, would you like to start by making a short, short opening statement?
Um, I, I start with my life, as I said, in my, uh, working life as a saw doctor sawmaker. At, uh, pine mill out the road here at, uh, Gilmore. Uh, I've, I've worked in the pine industry and in the hardwood industry. We also run a hardwood sawmill. Uh, kiln drying operation for some years on our property at Agden Billy where we were putting our own timber through off the property. As well as, uh, alpine ash we were buying off Forest Corporation. Um, I'd just like to say, I, I sat up at the back there and listened for a little bit. Uh, the thing that, uh, brought our sawmill to, uh, standstill, uh, started exporting logs out of Victoria, Western Australia, to China. Uh, they were processing it in China, uh, drying it, uh, because our, our, well, our hardwood timber was kiln dried. A lot of it went into flooring and furniture, the top end as well as framing timber. Um, and then it was brought back to Australia and it was sold in Australia for what it cost us just to mill it without drying it. So that just about put us out of business overnight. Uh, people said, how can they do that? And I said, quite easily. Sea freight at the time was that cheap. This was in the nineties. Uh, we could get a container of dried timber from Sydney to Shanghai for less than what we could get a semi-trail load from Agden Billy to Brisbane. So, um, and at the same time, people talk about, uh, uh, some of the other people here that have spoken earlier. About the, uh, importing the timber, they were bringing in a few years back, uh, radiated pine out of Russia. Selling it in wogga wogga for less than the cost of production here in Tum tum or Tumbarumba. So you just can't compete. It's called globalization, right? Um, yeah, so that just puts it out of business. Uh, the, um, plantation forestry, I'm afraid to say is a poor land use in my opinion. Uh, farming kills it and grazing, uh, as far as jobs and return on capital goes. Uh, if they didn't have, uh, if they weren't subsidised by the taxpayer, um, and even the managed investment schemes with the tax breaks. That, that wouldn't happen. They'd go out backwards. Um, it's a bit like the car industry, I suppose. While we've got a timber industry here in Australia, plantation timber industry, while it's being subsidised, it'll keep on going. If it had to stand on its own two feet, it wouldn't be able to do it, I think. Um, times change, uh, markets change. They've, uh, made big inroads in the plantations, uh, in the seventies. When the bottom fell out of the cattle market, when cattle were worth about three cents a curlo. A lot of country was bought up then by the New South Wales government. Uh, and then we had, uh, another big hiccup there when the bottom fell out of the wool market with the floor price. Uh, there was other countries snapped up then. Uh, where we were, or where we live, our property there, we were twenty kilometres away from the nearest pine plantation. And then Red Hill Station was bought by the New South Wales government and that put them on our southern boundary. Uh, we didn't have much experience with being a neighbour to pine plantation until that happened. It took them some years to plant Red Hill. Uh, David Graham says it was something like thirty thousand acres. I thought it was something twelve, twenty-seven, but anyway. Um, and then we had another property on our eastern side, Black Andrew, was purchased, uh, in the eighties there when the wool went down. Uh, by a managed investment scheme. Uh, it bolted of course, as the most often did back then. Uh, Forest Corporation picked it up and then they bought Nanninggrass Station on our northern side, uh, in the nineties. And, um, yeah, so we've got about a thirty-seven, thirty-eight kilometre boundary with Forest Corporation. Um, part of that is, uh, what they call Jeremiah Nature Reserve, which was Bun Gongo State Forest, a hardwood block, which has been made into a, a nature reserve now. Um, so, uh, there's not much weed problem there in the nature reserve. It's creeping in there because it's got pine on, well, all around it, I think, apart from where it joins us now. Um, we did have a dog problem. Wild dogs coming in. They were coming in right from Kosiosko National Park. In through Bondo, in through the pine plantations and turning up and killing our sheep and neighbouring sheep. Uh, with, uh, with the LLS, we've got dog groups going. Uh, Forest Corporation did come on board to a little bit of prompting. Uh, the last eighteen months, we haven't had a dog attack. So just fingers crossed. Um, the, uh, as far as the fire goes, I'm also a group captain with the RFS. I've been for some years, uh, been involved in many a pine fire. Uh, our Agden Billy Brigade, since the, uh, properties were bought up by the pine plantation people. Uh, our fire brigade numbers are less than half men on the ground because the, there was families on those properties. Um, and if the smoke went up, you had heaps of people to give you a hand. Uh, even the Forest Corporation, I think they used to have something like about, at Bondo of Tum tum, about a hundred and fifty staff. Uh, now they've probably got about thirty and I think that includes office staff. So that's the Tumbarumba and Batlow are probably about the same. I'm not sure, exactly sure of the numbers, but, you know, there would have been a hundred, a hundred and twenty, um, people in, uh, Forest Corporation people in each place. Uh, and the numbers just aren't there what they used to be. Um, one of the, my biggest gripe while I'm here today is, uh, is the weed control or lack of with the pine plantations. Um, I just cannot, could not find the last day or so. I think it was, um, I, I put in my submission, uh, Plantations Act of nineteen eighty-eight. But I think I've been told about nineteen ninety-nine it was changed. Where, um, plant, the plantation act where they're, uh, they only have to do six to ten metres. I think it's six metres. That's about all they do at our place, joining us. Uh, spray the weeds there and the, inside that six metres, nothing happens. Now with the blackberries, anyone that's had anything to do with blackberries, uh, blackberries are very nice to. uh, blackberries are very nice to eat. Um, the birds and the kangaroos, foxes, everything eats them. Uh, we get blackberries there further than five kilometres into our property, under the trees, gullies, anywhere, even outside my house yard, I found one the other day, just where a bird had landed in a tree. Um, and they've, they've poked the seed out, it's coated in fertiliser and away it goes. Um, with the demise of the wool industry, um, run ewes these days where we used to run a lot of weathers. The weathers would be like goats and any little blackberry, they'd, they'd eat it, where the ewes are a bit fussier and a lot of the time they, they don't eat them. Especially the last two summers where we've had, uh, wet summers and heaps of grass and they're not pushed, uh, they can pick and choose. Uh, my family operation spends in excess of fifty thousand dollars a year on blackberry control. And that's without helicopter, the helicopter's about two thousand dollars an hour now, if you hire one of those. Uh, contracted with a quick spray, hand spray, um, about a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, I think, is about the going rate for two blokes with a, with a, uh, a quick spray on a four wheel drive ute. Uh, we have our own quick spray and, uh, I spray for most of the summer into the autumn when I'm not doing other things, harvesting or whatever. Um, yeah, and just pull my hair out and we just don't get around it all each year. We try hard, but, um, and, uh, as the pine plantation adjoining us comes up to their first thin, from when they first planted, to go, take a step back, that they were grazing properties, they had minimal, if any, blackberry on them, uh, when they were purchased and put into pine plantation. Now, they don't graze it for about the first three to five years when they put it into a pine plantation, so, uh, the, let the young trees get a bit of a go on. So, uh, it's not grazed, it's, it just turns into wilderness, it's a club made for kangaroos. They lay around and, uh, eat and breed. And then, once the trees start to get up and run out of food, well, where are we going to go? Well, we'll go next door, but anyway. And the same with the, uh, the same with the blackberries. The blackberries get a bit of a go on there and, um, yeah, away they go. Now, the, the pine plantations there, now, once they come up to first, once they do the first thin, they open it up a bit, uh, get the sunlight in, that's when the blackberries really start to take off. Uh, once they do the second thin, that's when they really blow out and you get an understory, something like that, right through the pine forest. So when you did get a fire in there, you've got a lightning strike in there, twenty metres, you can't get to it. If you do go in, you'll want to be bloody lucky to get back out if you have a wind change because you know what it's like to try and run through a blackberry like that. So, uh, they're their own worst enemy as far as no weed control goes. Um, I have seen, uh, green blackberry leaves in a, in a dry time when they have a forest fire, it's usually in a drought gear, they will burn green, they float very well, like a feather. Seen them spout out five Ks on the thermals, on the updrafts and take the, uh, take the blackberry leaf out and light it somewhere else. So they're their own worst enemy with their blackberry problem. Um, I don't know what the answer is. I would love if someone could come up with an answer, but I think it's, 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 uh, very unfair that if they created the problem, it's on their side of the fence, they should keep it on their side of the fence. It's like a neighbour from hell, you know? If it was in town here, we'd be having court cases all the time. Um, the, uh, the private landholder, uh, has to maintain their weeds, uh, and their, uh, the local government act and the council weed inspector, uh, drives around and has a bit of a look, but plantations, both private and government, are exempt. So, uh, yeah, I just don't know what the, what the, what we're going to do. Um, and that's the thing, as far as I'm wanting another thirty thousand hectares, not in my backyard, please. Tasmania would be a good place for it, I think, but anyway. Um, another, another issue is, I'll just touch on this, is the, the plantation interception, it's called the water. Um, pine plantation uses about thirty-six inches, nine hundred mils of rainfall a year. Uh, hardwood plantation uses about eighteen inches. Um, I think about eight to ten inches there for pasture. Uh, the pulp log that goes to Visi from Forest Corporation, I am told, I have not seen it, but I am told, about four dollars fifty a ton. Um, in the life of a pine plantation there, if they had to buy the water, they wouldn't even make enough money out of it to pay for the water. They'd be better off not, the government would be better off not growing trees on it and just selling the water off it. They'd make more money. Um, yeah, that's about it, I think.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you also to the deputy chair for questions.
Yeah, yeah, um, in fact, thanks, thanks for giving us the plug with the sharing too. Um, can I?
You feel I stole the money, do I have it?
Yeah, mate, it's been heavy on the pocket. Can I, um, I want to go to that last, the last comment around the water issue, okay? So you're, you're downstream from, uh, the, the, the plantations that you, you spoke about?
Yeah, well, I, I, there, there is creeks that start in those plantations. Uh, we're above Nanning Grove.
Yeah.
But Black Andrew and, and some of the Red Hill country.
Yeah.
Creeks come down. And we've had, uh, especially in the, the drier years since the plantations been there, creeks that usually run for nine months of the year are dry for nine months of the year.
And that's since the plantations went in?
Yep. They're, they're ripped on the contour, they were even mound ploughing them on the contour, but I think they've gone away from the mound ploughing. The mound plough was the ripper tile on the bulldozer and disc through the sides, they pulled it up into a mound about that big. And they'd do that on the contour and catch every drop of water so there'd be no runoff.
No runoff, yeah, yeah.
And soak in, but if you don't get, uh, thirty-six inches of rain, the, the pine tree just sucks it out of the ground and once, once it gets it out of the ground, they turn red and die.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and you were, I think you were in the, uh, the gallery, um, when the, um, the working group were giving their, some of their responses, but they indicated to the committee that the loss on productivity within a pine plantation of blackberry growth is about two and a half thousand dollars per hectare per year.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I just did some quick calculations on having to spray that out, for instance, if you were to, if, if, you know, the government was to invest significant dollars in trying to bring it under control, um, it seems pretty, that, that's going to be pretty costly, even just to, if you were to, uh, um, balance out the loss on productivity. Um, what, what, it's going to take money. Um, what do you think is the contribution, uh, of blackberries to the, to the fires, uh, when they come through?
Oh, to the fires, significant, significant. If, if, uh, a plantation coming up to, uh, clear fall, if it's got no blackberry undergrowth, even probably second, second thin, coming up to second thin, if, if, if it's got no blackberry understory, it's very hard for that fire to get up into the trees and there'd only be pine needles underneath. But if you've got a blackberry like that, it flares up and you get a what's called a crown fire there. It gets up in the, up in the trees and away she goes.
Yep.
And that's when it really devastates it.
Okay.
But pine trees are very susceptible, they won't take any fire whatsoever. If, if they just get burnt for that much around the trunk, they'll die. They just can't handle it, not like a gun tree.
Okay, and so you're advocating, I won't put these words in your mouth, but I guess I'm taking from what you were saying in your opening statement, uh, you, you would be advocating for a change in legislative arrangements that, uh, that would then make, uh, Forest Corp and, and I guess the private forests as well, make them responsible and accountable for the weeds on their, on their lands?
That's, that's right, that's right. And, and when they, when they, they spray it out, when they, uh, come to an end of a, uh, rotation and start again, but if they kept on the weeds, that's the thing. When they bought these properties, they had no blackberry. If they had it kept on from day one, like the rest of us, they wouldn't have a problem. Our, our, um, our weed programme used to take, when I was a kid there before the pine moved in, used to take us one or two weeks of the year. And I don't think we'd even spray a blackberry because there was none there. There was a few old briars there from the cattle and maybe a little bit of St John's water was starting to sneak in, but now it's just, it's just blackberries.
Mr. Fa, thank you. Um, thank you very much for coming in and, and sharing, I guess, the counterpoint today to what we've heard and, um, it's always good to actually get the perspective from the other side. Uh, I noted in your introduction, you talked about, you know, if not in my backyard, you know, with thirty thousand hectares and the like. Um, I guess, playing devil's advocate and asking this in two parts, if not around this area, where, and you said Tasmania, I get, I'm going to say facetiously, but realistically, where would you suggest we have it? And, uh, I noted also, you were talking about, um, the, the, I guess, the cost per ton that perhaps, um, one of the processes like Visi might pay. And, you know, you're saying that, you know, the cost of the water wouldn't even, um, cover the, 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 the per ton, uh, cost that they're paying for that fibre. Um, so why would the government bother? Um, what, where would you, where would you have it? The, the fibre industry around here? And two, if we're not going to do it, then how do we supply ourselves with the fibre that we need to build houses, create paper, et cetera?
Well, where we're doing it was native forests, but they've, they've locked up all the native forest and made it into a national park and, and they have a big fire problem there too.
Hmm.
You know, that's, um, it was sustainable. When, when we were, uh, buying a log off Forest Corporation there, a big log would cost us a hundred dollars a ton, a hundred dollars a cubic metre, uh, for that log.
Was that alpine ash?
Pardon?
Was that the alpine ash?
That, alpine ash, that's correct. Um, quote of quality grade, um, and you'd have to get some money back out of that, you know? You'd, you'd, uh, high end product where you could. Uh, and then it went into framing timber, but then we're always competing with the pine in the framing timber if they could get, if they could get two sticks of pine, the trust makers, they went computerised, that's another thing with the timber industry. You have to stay at the forefront, you have to have that technology, you have to be up to date. The trust makers went to computerised, um, programmes to make those trusses. If they could get two pieces of pine to put in place of one piece of hardwood and save ten cents, well, they'd do it.
Hmm.
You know, so, and, and even when I was doing my apprenticeship back in the early eighties, a shipload of pine from New Zealand had turned up in Sydney and the yard out here at Gilmore would be full of processed pine because they'd be undercut. Now, there was a lot of managed investment scheme, there was, the home of managed investment schemes, New Zealand was. And a lot of that pine country there now went back to dairy farms and I'm not sure, but, uh, back to producing lamb, back to farming now because the money's not in it.
So your suggestion is that we go to, I guess, a more hardwood based, um, uh, indigenous stock, uh, industry as opposed to the radiata pine type that we are seeing now?
Well, that's the thing, they've, they've shut down the, the native hardwood forests there and they're going to do it out of plantation, but, um, being a saw doctor sawmaker and being in the sawmilling game, um, your plantation hardwood is a piece of rubbish, actually. It's, it's springy juvenile, you, you need the older trees there to get a decent stick of wood. Um, the pine plantation, the pine industry here at Tumit was developed by the government. They resumed country at Argalon, back here to the east at Tumit. They resumed farmland, um, wrote them out a cheque, told them to pack their gear and be on their way and they put it into pine to create jobs. Well, back in the day, everything was done by hand, it did create a lot of jobs. But these days with mechanisation, with, uh, Theresa said about the, the harvesting machinery, um, when I was doing my apprenticeship, the two busiest businesses in Tumit here were the chainsaw shops. They used to have a power of people in them, working in them and of an afternoon there from about three o'clock till five o'clock, that'd be just chaos. There'd just be people everywhere with chainsaws and then, once, once the harvesters, um, came to town, the first people that bought the harvesters made a lot of money because they were getting the same ton rate, what the man was with the chainsaw and they could probably cut down ten, what, what ten blokes had cut down, ten or twenty blokes had cut down in a day there that one man in the machine doing.
But what we're seeing now is, I guess, a new type of, um, job that's been created out of that industry. Um, for example, the Visi plant has, uh, any number of, uh, technical, um, uh, computerised or, um, uh, management, uh, uh, even down to chemical, um, interaction type, um, roles. Um, and that's all fed by, um, softwood fibre, um, into the plant. So, um, the, the roles may have changed, but there's no doubt that the softwood industry supports a lot of jobs within the Snowy Valleys area. Um, so, again, I guess I'd ask, you, given that we have the industry here now, given that there are, um, as many jobs as there are that are supported off that industry, um, we, I think it's reasonable that we, that we need to have it, we need to have it somewhere.
Yeah, no, you're, you're not going to get rid of it, I don't think. The, the, the country's not going to go back, but it's, um.
But, but as I'm saying, when you say you don't want it, like, you, you don't want the additional, um, uh, amount of fibre that's required next to you, where would you, where do you see the best place to actually put it?
Well, and it'd have to be in the high rainfall country. Um, up at Trundle and, and where they were talking about bringing the logs from up the Northern Tavellands, well, they've established those forests up there, but they had no mills. They planted the forest there, now I'm not sure whether they were private, I think they might have been private and government. Uh, and they planted those plantations there in the hope that the mills would follow, but they didn't. But, yeah.
Yeah, right, thank you.
They didn't, but they're going to cut them down now, so.
Mr. Paulus, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Uh, Mr. Kingwell, just a very quick question. In your last paragraph, you, you, you outlined some of the things that Forest Corp could, should be able to address before more productive land is given over to, uh, pine plantations. If, if these things were tackled, do, do you think your own experience as a private landholder would sort of reshape your thinking? If, if, if that was the, sort of, the benchmark in terms of your own interactions with, with a pine plantation?
Oh, it breaks my heart, some of that country that's gone under pine, when I, when I drive through it. And I think, you know, if it, if you were running livestock on it, some of it there, you could drive, drive your car over, you don't need a four wheel drive, you know? It's whatever, red basal, high rainfall, you could grow anything on it. And you've got weeds growing on it, pine trees. But we do need timber, I'll admit that, we do need timber. But at what cost? And what cost to the neighbours? That's, that's my biggest gripe. If they'd kept their problems on their side of the fence and they could live with them and we didn't have to, well, that'd be good. Because every landowner that adjoins the pine all have the same gripe. It costs them money because of their neighbour. And as, as I've said to the people at Forest Corporation on many occasions, if I was costing them fifty thousand plus a year as a neighbour, I'd have the police knocking on the door. And they said, oh, no, it wouldn't be like that. And I said, yeah, I bet it wouldn't be. If I was costing them fifty grand a year and they could see that, they would do something about it. I'm sure.
I, that aspect, I take your point, I understand, thank you.
Looking for other questions, um, I think that concludes our hearing, I think.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, the, the strong takeaway message is that they need to do more with weed control.
Exactly, exactly.
Thought that'd be a prominent feature in our report. So thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Kingwell, um, for your time. I don't believe you're taking questions, I've noticed. Um, but yeah, once again, thank you for coming and giving us the, I guess, a different, different view of the world, um, in terms of, something we haven't heard a lot of, so thank you.
Yep, now, my late father said to me one day, he said, you'll have to sell out one day. He said, you'll never keep the weeds back. And I said, well, we're going to try hard.
Gee.
Yeah.
Try it.
Go on, yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you.
But, uh, thank you, gentlemen. But, uh, thank you, gentlemen.